Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education pursuant to New Jersey statutes and the rules adopted by the Board of Education. Notice of this meeting was sent to rural community newspapers, The Star-Ledger and Cable Vision of Elizabeth on Friday, September 7th, 2012. In addition, this notice is posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of 500 North Broad Street. In pursuit of this act, a copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers to this September 13th, 2012, meeting of the Elizabeth Board of Education. We are here to govern, provide management oversight, and make policy for the district. The superintendent manages the district. This is a meeting of the Board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of the Elizabeth Board of Education's permanent record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask you that you silence the sound on your electronic devices. Since it is legally mandated that these proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. Thank you for your interest in the Elizabeth Public Schools. There will be a public portion for citizens to address the Board. Participants for the public portion must sign in one hour prior to the advertised start of the meeting so that they may have the opportunity to speak. The sign-in sheet states the name, address, telephone number, and the reason the person wants to comment, whether it is an agenda item or a general education comment. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Here.
De Nosa.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Mann.
Here.
Padlo.
Here.
Ferrer.
Here.
Trujillo.
Nazco.
Here.
At this moment, I'd like to call Sandra Hart, Vice Principal of the Admiral William F. Hawley Jr. Leadership Academy, to lead us in our invocation. Everyone, please rise.
Would you please close your eyes? Almighty, ever living God, Creator of heavens and earth, tonight we come before Your throne of grace, thanking You for all the blessings You have bestowed upon us individually and collectively as the Elizabeth Public School. Father God, tonight we come, our superintendent, administrators, staff, parents, students, and the community of Elizabeth, to thank You for the blessings You have bestowed upon us. We thank You especially for giving us the honor of being the number-one urban school district in the state of New Jersey. As we continue to educate Your children, O God, to provide them with excellent educational experiences, we ask that You be with us and that You guide us and You direct us so that our children will strive for higher heights and be the leaders that we know that they can be. Father God, anything that this district needs, You know best, and we ask that You fail not to provide it unto us as You help us in our mission to make the Elizabeth Public School the best one in the state of New Jersey. Father God, we ask that You answer our prayer as only You can. Amen?
Amen. Thank you, Vice Principal Hart. I ask you all to remain standing as we now have a moment of silence for a dear friend of the Elizabeth Public Schools and a dear friend of the Elizabeth Schools District who passed last week. A moment of silence for Robert J. Delaney and a special moment of remembrance for the September 11th victims at the World Trade Center. Thank you. Now, the presentation of colors by the Admiral William F. Halsey Jr. Leadership Academy Junior ROTC. The Pledge of Allegiance by Joyce Almeida, eighth-grade student, Dr. Orlando Adreira, Academy School Number 26.
Please salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Almeida. Now, the Star-Spangled Banner by Francis Scott Key will be performed by the voices of Harmony from Dr. Orlando Adreira, Academy School Number 26, conducted by Ms. Alma Davis, Kane University Student Teacher. And now, our Pledge of Ethics by Taylor Barrett, eighth-grade student, Dr. Orlando Adreira, Academy School Number 26.
As a member of the professional learning community, I will treat people as I wish to be treated. To do that, I pledge to understand that the school community is a special place, respectfully when someone else is speaking, not paying close attention and not interrupting, speaking in a convoice, using proper language, dress appropriately for the teaching and learning, inspire the best of myself and others by demonstrating successes and learning from mistakes, care about others by demonstrating acts of kindness, be a lifelong learner and take every opportunity to learn from others.
Thank you very much. Please be seated as we watch our court release video.
We believe all students can learn and achieve at high level.
We will ensure that all students graduate prepared to pursue their full secondary education.
We believe that teachers make a positive difference in student achievement.
We will recruit, develop, retain, and celebrate world-class teachers.
We believe that effective leaders produce excellent results.
We will recruit, develop, retain, and reward result-driven leaders.
We believe that a high quarantine produces a legacy of enduring greatness.
We will build a high-performance team that achieves excellence.
Mr. President, can I? I would like to motion to accept the resignation of Commissioner Michael Larisso. Motion made by Mr. Ferrera, second by Mr. Padlo. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Nazco.
Yes.
Hi, Mr. President. I'd like to motion to assign Mr. Tony Montero to fill the seat. Michael Larisso.
Second motion. Motion made by Mr. Ferrera, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Mr. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mann.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Nazco.
Absolutely yes.
Hi.
Hi. Tony Montero.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government.
And to the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority for people.
I.
I, Tony Montero.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualification.
That I possess the qualification.
Described by law.
Described by law.
For the office of member.
For the office of member.
Of a Board of Education.
Of a Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of that body.
All the duties of the office.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you to the members, to Mr. President, to the members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Pablo Munoz. I want to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you for this faith that you have in me tonight and appointing me, and I want to thank God for allowing me this opportunity to be here tonight. And to all of you, I want to once again thank everyone for this support that you have shown and by your applause. I know people are going to ask, why am I running for the school board again when I have served just a few years ago? And the answer is very simple, because I want to preserve the independence of this Elizabeth School Board. Those of you who know me know that I am fiercely independent, and for that I give all my thanks both to God and to my parents. And we can never in life miss the opportunity to thank our parents enough, and I want to be allowed to do that tonight. My parents were wonderful people, and my father is still with me, and I wish he could be here tonight. But my father and mom were immigrants to this country, like many of you here tonight, and like many of the children's parents that attend our school system. And my parents loved this country to death. As a matter of fact, when someone ever talked ill or bad of this country, my father would always say, "It was not easy coming to America, but it's easy to get out." So if you're not proud, if you're not happy, you can leave. And beside my parents being proud, I think they planted that in our hearts of being very independent children. They taught us a right from wrong, but more importantly, they taught us of independence. They said, "Never ask more what people can do for you, but what you can do for yourself." And that's what we grew up in Elizabeth for believing. My two older brothers, one went on to become a lawyer and a judge, and my middle brother went on to become an airline pilot. And today, here I am in front of all of you, again, serving as Elizabeth School Board Member. But my parents taught us that independence is so important. And the simple answer of why I'm back is because it was revealed to me not too long ago that the almighty, powerful political boss of this county, Senator Ray Lesniak, was once again going to spend tens and thousands of dollars to run candidates against the school board. Not because he wants to see the school board continue their progress, because Ray Lesniak wants the power to control the school board, and that's just wrong. That's just wrong. Those of you who know me and know when I was a councilman in Elizabeth for eight years and a school board member for two, know my independence. I don't care what color your uniform is, I don't care what political party you belong to, and I don't care who you vote for. I care that you vote, and I care that you vote for the person who makes a difference. And I care that you vote for the person who's going to represent your interests and your values. That's what matters, and that's what's important. This school board has been doing that now for the last dozen, half, dozen, eight, nine years, as long as I can remember, since Pablo Munoz has taken the helm. But let me remind you this and remind you why I'm here tonight. When Senator Ray Lesniak, the almighty, powerful senator who's been running this county for 34 years, 34 years, mind you, he's elected mayors, he's elected councilmen, he's elected school board members, and he's controlled all of them, not in our best interest, in his best interest. Senator Ray Lesniak wants to control the school board, and let me tell you why we should say no. Because Senator Ray Lesniak, once, a few years back, controlled the school board. He had his appointed and anointed members of the school board. And when he did that, Ray Lesniak, whether it was 10 or 12 years ago, the school of the school district of Elizabeth was failing. It was failing. We were last on the bottom. Test scores were going down, declining every year. We were, people were moving out of the city of Elizabeth by leaps and bounds, good families. The immigrants who saw that they'd invested all this time in the city of Elizabeth and wanted to do good, but saw the schools were not what they were, what they should be, were leaving the city. Ray Lesniak didn't care. Fast forward 10 years or 12 years later with this board, the vision and the leadership of Pablo Munoz and this board. Today, we went from last place in the state of New Jersey to the number-one urban school district in this state of New Jersey. And that credit doesn't just go to Pablo and the board members here tonight, it goes to all the staff members, the administrators, the teachers, and all of you, the parents, who have participated in this. 12 years ago, when Senator Ray Lesniak controlled the school board, no child was in a uniform. Today, 12 years later, 23,000 kids in beautiful uniforms. 12 years ago, when Ray Lesniak controlled the school board, our test scores were going down every year, and now, for the past six years, test scores have gone up every single year. When Ray Lesniak controlled the school board, there were no blue ribbon schools. We weren't even recognized as a district that had any school that warranted to be recognized. Today, three national blue ribbon schools, the most in any city in the state of New Jersey. So simply put, simply put, that's why I came to join this school board. When they asked me, I had to think about it. I knew that I would have to sacrifice time away from my family and from my businesses, but I knew the commitment was too large and too important for all of us to pass this up and to allow Ray Lesniak to put up three hand-picked candidates who have not the interest at heart of you, the staff, or the children of this city, but the best interest of Ray Lesniak and all the political power brokers to control the Elizabeth School Board. And with your support and with your help, I'm going to ask you to choose the direction that this school board has been going in, to continue the progress of this school board and this leadership of Pablo Munoz and all of you. I want to thank you for this opportunity. And although time is difficult and I know the sacrifices need to be made, I will commit to each and every one of you on the Board and all of you here. I will spend the next two months visiting your schools, talking to the parents, meeting the children, and any one of you ever need to reach me, please, I'll be accessible to all of you at any given time. Thank you all.
Mr. President, may I have the microphone? Floor is yours. Thank you. Mr. Montero, I want to welcome you back to this board. It's been a great honor knowing you for the better part of 20 years. We're involved in politics back in the early '90s, and I know you're a fighter, you're a trooper, and you're an honorable man, and you'll always do what's right for your constituents, and I appreciate you coming back in a moment of need. Welcome back.
Thank you, John.
Mr. President. Well, I just wanted to thank Mr. Montero for taking that brave step and accepting the opportunity to take the seat once again on the Board. It's a very tough seat. I know you're a very tough person, and I know you stand for the right cause, and you're here for not only the betterment of the children, but to make sure that you represent our taxpayers in the city of Elizabeth as well. So I thank you very much for taking the opportunity again to serve on the Board and good luck.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I just want to thank Mr. Montero for taking his time to join us. I think it's a crucial time. Elizabeth is driving by excellence, and we have to maintain this position. I am very proud to be in this board. I think that being an educator gives me that advantage or appreciating being on both sides, so thank you and welcome again.
Mr. President. Tony, I want to welcome you back. I know you're a hard worker, and you're going to be working very hard with us to make sure that everything that we have stays and that we even get better, so again, looking forward to working with you the next few months.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may. Commissioner, Commissioner Martin.
Mr. President, thank you. Tony, we were running mates in the past, and I just want to say welcome back. We know how dedicated you are and how great of an asset you are to this board and how well we all work together, so I want to welcome you back because this is a brave move that you're making right now, especially in the time with all of the things that are going on politically. And we want to make sure that we stay focused, and I know that you are one that really stays focused on, you know, the children and the citizens of Elizabeth, so thank you again for coming back.
Thank you, Mary.
Commissioner Torrio.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What a pleasant surprise. It's good to see Mr. Montero back. For those who don't know, Mr. Montero and I ran in 2007, and back then, we faced a lot of what we still face today. We got the political bosses who wished to infiltrate and spread their influence on this school board. Tony fought them then, and I know he'll fight them again well now. Tony, you've been successful in a lot of things you've done. You've created businesses, you served on city council, and you served here on this board. It's a pleasure to have you back on this board because I know with you on our side, the children of Elizabeth will get the best education possible. You will fight for that every day. I know who you are, and I am so glad to have you by my side again because unfortunately, our old friends are at their old tricks, and they want to destroy this board, and no one knows what they're capable of doing or the hate they have for the children's education. They've attacked you in the past, and you fought them. You have a long, long history of standing up for the people and doing the right thing, and that now more than ever is what this board needs, a voice like Tony Montero to stand up for the children of Elizabeth. It's been a long time coming, and I'm glad to see you again, my friend. This board's much better because you're here today. Thank you, Mr. Torrio.
Lastly, Commissioner Montero, welcome back.
Thank you.
It was an honor to serve with you a few years ago. We served those two years together, and it was a wonderful speech that you made before, and I want to emphasize on a couple of points, specifically on how you mentioned independence. And you have always been forward-thinking, independently, dynamic as an individual. And another thing that I would like to add to that, that you add to this board, is experience in leadership. I was lucky enough, as many of us swore, to serve with you for those two years, and I can't thank you enough for what I learned from you as far as experience in leadership, and your tenure as a commissioner before has made us a better, what made us a better board and made us a better school. and made us a, a better school district. And having you back is a tremendous asset, not only for us as a board, but for the children and for the city, the citizens of the city of Elizabeth. So, I am excited, I am inspired to work with you once again and to keep this district moving forward. Thank you and welcome back, my friend.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Now, we have some performances by The Voices of Harmony by the Tato Orlando Edreda Academy School Number Twenty-Six.
.................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
How about, how about that, everybody? Another round of applause for The Voices of Harmony. Great job, guys. Really fantastic. I'm going to ask my colleagues to join me as we have a special ceremony. Commissioner Montero. There is a, a resolution that I would like to have read, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Montero to do the honors.
Board of Education Resolution. Whereas Robert J. Delaney was a motivating, enthusiastic, and highly respected team member at the Elizabeth Public Schools for over forty-eight years until his retirement in 2010. And whereas Robert Delaney moved to Elizabeth, New Jersey at a very young age, attended the Elizabeth Public Schools, and remained a lifelong resident of Elizabeth. And whereas he began his service in the Elizabeth Board of Education in the Division of Plant, Property, and Equipment as a general repairman, was subsequently named Supervisor of Custodians, and finally Coordinator of Maintenance in 1998, where he remained until his retirement in 2010. And whereas his dedication and effective management and communication skills earned him the respect of his fellow team members and everyone whom he interacted with within the Elizabeth Public Schools community. And whereas his universal respectability, generosity with time and effort, enthusiasm to the district will continue to influence and inspire the past, the present, and the future team members here at the Elizabeth Public Schools. And now, therefore be it resolved that the Elizabeth Board of Education name the warehouse located at 417 South Broad Street in Elizabeth, New Jersey, in the name of Robert J. Delaney for his many years of dedicated service and laudable contributions to the Elizabeth Public Schools. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread on the official minutes of the Board of Education, and a copy be presented to the family of Robert J. Delaney. I move the resolution.
Mr. Kennedy, the resolution by move by Mr. Montero, second by Ms. Pereira. Roll call, Mr. Kennedy. Montero. Castillo. Tenosa. Gonzalez. Munn. Padlo. Pereira. Trujillo. Nazca. Absolutely yes. If any of Robert Delaney's family and close friends would please join us up front. On behalf of the Board of Education in remembrance of Bob Delaney and his dedicated service to the Elizabeth Public Schools, I would like to present, present this resolution to you. Would any of you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Fernando. Let me just take a deep breath and hope that I get through this, but I'm sure you will all help me get through this. On this suspicious occasion, I have been asked to say a few words about Robert J. Delaney. Bob, as most of us called him, started working for the Elizabeth Board of Education in 1964. He was a young man of twenty-six at the time. He often told me stories of all the different jobs he had done during the forty-eight years he worked. I was always amazed to hear that he had worked himself through the ranks. Bob worked as a substitute custodian. He was appointed as a custodian to Robert Morris School Number Eighteen. I was amazed by that he had been a bus driver, a laborer, general repairman, head custodian, supervisor of custodians, and finally coordinator of custodians and mechanics before he retired on July first, 2010. Bob could have retired years earlier, but he was so committed to his job and his people that Bob stayed with the board until he was seventy-two years old. No one could ever fool him when he walked into a building because he knew all the tricks of the trade. He always found something, I see people nodding, something to point out on his tours of all the buildings. No one was safe, whether it was a little bit of dust on top of the door sills or exit signs, that had not, or fire extinguishers that had not been inspected. Bob always found something that needed to be done better in the Elizabeth Schools. Bob would get angry at times and was known to yell quite loudly when the job was not done to his specifications. Oh, and I mean really loud. But a few minutes later, he would be having a cup of coffee with them and telling them how to do a better job. He never really stayed angry with anybody. In the end, he always stood by his people, as he called them. Bob earned everyone's love and respect. He had a special relationship with everyone he came into contact with and made you feel like you were his best friend. As president of the Elizabeth Education Association, Bob and I had our share of arguments, naturally. But as Al Raimi, Assistant Director of NGA, said to me the other night, Bob kept it between being a coordinator and working with the E A. Not an easy task. Only someone as remarkable as Bob could pull this off. I know that Bob's presence in my life helped me grow and become a better president and person. In reality, Bob was a very simple man. He never looked for recognition. He was always content to be in the background. If he were here tonight, he would say, Rose, please don't embarrass me by making a fuss. I'm leaving at a lot, but Bob would want me to keep it short and simple. But I do want to share Bob's last five months. Although he was very ill, he was very happy because he was surrounded by his Elizabeth Board of Education and E A family. And I have to tell you, Bob was also our food critic. He always had comments about places we ate and how food was served. For instance, he would only eat pork chops with a bone. Nothing else would do. In fact, that was his last request for dinner. There were cards spent with scratch offs because Bob loved to gamble. Phone calls checking in to see how he was feeling. He and Richie Kennedy spoke every day, especially about the Yankees. The house was always buzzing with visitors. He would be happy to see them. He would be so happy to see them that he would cry. There were loads of hugging, holding hands, and lots of kissing. All that love and affection was the best medicine for Bob. Here with us tonight is Bob's family. We introduce them, and that's Robert Delaney Jr., Sue, and Bob, and Sue, his daughter-in-law, who sent us texts and pictures of his two beautiful grandchildren, Rachel and David, all summer long. So, I say Bob was truly a great man who will always be remembered, and I would like to thank Pablo Munoz Superintendent of Schools and the distinguished board members by keeping his memory alive by naming the warehouse where he spent forty-eight years of his life as the Robert J. Delaney Warehouse. And in Bob's memory, I want to thank everyone that came out tonight to honor his memory. And I know his boys are in the back, but I would like everyone who worked with Bob and knew Bob and loved Bob to please stand up now. So, if you'd all just stand.
Thank you, Rose. Thank you. Anybody like to say a few words? Thank you very much. Before we continue, I'd like to recognize a couple dignitaries that are here, dignitaries and former dignitaries that are here. Councilman Frank Mazza is here with us this evening. Councilman. We have, we have a former board president here this evening, Armando De Silva. I saw him peeking around here before. I also saw former board president Rafael Fajardo in the room as well. Good evening. The next part of the presentation, I'm going to turn over to my colleague Francisco Gonzalez.
Thank you, Fernando. Now, I'm going to introduce something that's very dear to my heart, and that's school uniforms. In 2005, the Elizabeth Board of Education adopted a school uniform policy for students in grades pre-K through twelve for specific schools within the district, and began adding schools to the uniform program each year after that. The Board School Uniform Policy promotes school safety, improves discipline, and enhances the learning environment. The Elizabeth Board of Education also believes that appropriate dress is instrumental in creating a feeling of pride and school unity for Elizabeth students resulting in better behavior, greater school spirit, and higher academic achievement. As of the beginning of the school year 2012-2013, with the addition of the Jefferson Arts Academy, the Elizabeth Board of Education is proud to announce that all Elizabeth Public Schools are now uniformed schools. That means that over twenty-three thousand children of Elizabeth that are attending our public schools are currently wearing uniforms to go to school. When I drive to work in the morning, I get this shield because I see them probably in the corner standing there for their bus to pick them up. So, again, I'm extremely proud, proud. Tonight, we have some of the Elizabeth Public Schools students here to demonstrate their school spirit as they proudly display the uniforms worn by various grades and school throughout the district. So, I would like to start representing the neighborhood schools. We have students from the Robert Morris School Number Eighteen. We're going to start with Johanna Otero, first grade. Followed by Anthony Diaz, also first grade. Paola Torres, eighth grade. And Christopher Bernard, eighth grade. Don't they look beautiful? Now, we have the uniform for our magnet schools. Representing the Tato Orlando Edreda Academy School Number Twenty-Six, we have Daniela Catarina, fourth grade. Gabriela Catarino, fifth grade. Genesis... Genesis Perez, eighth grade. And Christopher Roman, eighth grade. Now, representing the Doctor Albert Einstein School 29, we have Madison Higgins, second We have Cody Ruganin Higgins, fourth grade. We have Jay Sean Boyne, eighth grade. And we have Hillary Hernandez, eighth grade. Now, the School 29 was the first school that actually wore our uniforms on January 1st, 2006, when we opened it. So again, we're very proud that they were the first ones to represent the district with a uniform. Followed by the Ronald Reagan Academy School Number 30, we have Aurel Penelus Torres, pre-K. We have Alice Atlas, fourth grade. And we have Sebastian Salazar, sixth grade. And now representing the gifted and talented schools, we have William H. Halloran School 21 at 31. We have Dylan Da Silva, kindergarten. We have Brandon Da Silva, third grade. We have Zoe Rivera, third grade. And we have Victoria A. Rivera, fourth grade. And finally, we have representative from our six high schools, which we're very proud of them. Starting with Elizabeth High School, we have Alex Frey, twelfth grade. And we have Manilia Estrada, twelfth grade. We have, follow, we have Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy. We have Lauren Brora, twelfth grade. We have Akeem Carter, twelfth grade. And we have Kaylee Cordova, twelfth grade. Follow, we have the Admiral William F. Horsey Union Leadership Academy. We have Cesarina Ramos, twelfth grade. And we have Steven Ortiz, twelfth grade. Follow, we have the Thomas A. Edison Career and Technical Academy. We have Simon Bethanart, ninth grade. And Ashmirata Tebelo, ninth grade. We follow with the John E. Dwyer Technology Academy. We have Ivana Romulus, twelfth grade. And we have Aaronson Ramon, eleventh grade. And closer off, we have our last academy, a last school that proudly started wearing uniforms last Friday. I was there and I was so proud to see that sea of purple outside and inside and everyone so proudly wearing their purple. It's the Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy. We have Augustine Swetl, twelfth grade. We have Ruby Rivera, twelfth grade. And we have Tagira Minor, tenth grade. And here we have our proud students of our Elizabeth Public Schools wearing our uniforms to make them safe, better. We're very proud of all of you. You look marvelous in your uniforms. And I'm very proud that in 2005, we have the guts to sign a policy into place to provide uniforms to all the childrens. In October 10, 2005, when we had our meeting, we signed a policy into place and then we gave the direction to the superintendent to go ahead and start providing uniforms. And as I said before, in January 1st, 2006, our first school, School 29, was the first one to wear. And after that, it's only history. So we want to thank the board members at the time that backed up the policy, we went as superintendent, and the staff that have worked very hard to make sure all the children have their uniforms. So thank you, students. We're very proud of you. Thank you again, students, for coming and displaying how beautiful, how handsome, how pretty everyone looks on their uniforms. Like I said, we're very proud of you and the Elizabeth Board of Education. And we're going to keep supporting the uniforms so you can all feel safe and secure.